Good evening. It's Monday, February.
Seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council Roll Call.
Susan Skiers, I've been writing shortly, Joseph Jones.
Here.
Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Hahn?
Yes.
Item three, promotional penning for Fire Lieutenant Brian Jones.
James Meese, Fire Chief Windsor Heights Fire Department. Mayor and Council, City Administrator Plaguey, and esteemed guests. We gather here to celebrate the promotion of longstanding Fire Department member Brian Jones. Brian has shown exceptional dedication, determination, and a genuine desire to make a difference for the Windsor Heights community on its path to being promoted. Brian, if you would step forward, please. Brian, as you have your lieutenant badge pinned, you're not just changing badges. You're taking on a sacred duty to lead the members of the Windsor Heights Fire Department. Your badge represents the trust that our citizens, city leadership, and Fire Department members place in you, and the responsibility you now bear to uphold our public safety values with integrity and compassion. As you step into your new role, know that you are accepting that you now serve not only the community, but the members of the Windsor Heights Fire Department. We work for them, and it's our obligation as formal leaders to ensure their needs are met both on duty and off. The path ahead won't always be easy. There will be days that test your resolve, challenge your beliefs, and push you to your limits. But keep in mind, it's in those moments that you'll truly understand the depth of your commitment and the strength of your character. Wear your badge with pride, serve with honor, and always strive to be the best version of yourself. The community and Fire Department members you serve are placing their trust in you. Honor that trust every day, and with every action and every decision you make. If you'll please face me, we're going to read your oath of office. If you raise your right hand. I, Brian Jones, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Brian Jones, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of Lieutenant of Fire and EMS for the City of Windsor Heights.
Discharge all duties of the Fire Lieutenant of the City of Windsor Heights.
Polk County, Iowa.
Polk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now or hereafter required by law.
I pledge.
I pledge.
Concern of compassion for others.
Concern and compassion for others.
A willingness to help those in need.
A willingness to help others in need.
Courage and strength to deliver those placed within my care.
Courage and strength to deliver those placed within my care.
And to serve unselfishly whenever I am called.
And to serve unselfishly whenever I am called.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe Brian's wife is going to pin him tonight? And with council's permission, when we're finished, we'll get a few pictures. Just let me know.
That red? And wearing a white shirt.
You guys want to get pictures? We get mine last. Let's get your family taken care of.
We can vacate. Not even back.
I'm so proud of you tonight.
I tried.
Stop.
I tried to keep it short, but good.
It was really good.
I like that a lot.
They're moving.
Anybody else? Pictures?
Well. Do you want to get up there? His parents, you want to get up there?
I'll get a picture with them.
Okay.
Comb my hair. All three of them.
Okay. I was very zooming in.
Want me to take a little?
Don't forget.
I think these kids want some pictures with the Ash.
Oh, yeah. Along here. Let's get this out. We like each other.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, you can quit pretending.
That's rough. Be copying the personnel file. I don't have this in your file. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you. Water. Go ahead, the water.
Is that mine? Yes.
Pass that down. We lost our audience on screen.
Just the usual suspects now. All right, item four, public forum. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Public comment? Anybody online? All right, consent agenda.
Vote to approve.
Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Hahn?
Yes.
Six A, discuss public art plan. Adrian?
Yes, we have our consultant Liz Legit here to give a presentation and a little bit of Q and A for our draft public art plan. Go ahead, Liz.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members and all here tonight. I am Liz Legit. I am an art advisor and curator, and I own Liz Legit Gallery in Des Moines downtown. We have helped cities throughout Iowa and their public art plans and organizations, also commissioning several pieces of public art throughout the state. The City of Windsor Heights received a grant from Bravo to help create a public art plan. A rough draft has been submitted to the council for review. It outlines the purpose of the plan, the program goals, location priorities, and potential funding sources. I welcome any feedback or questions, but I'll go through a bit of it tonight. The Windsor Heights Public Art Plan offers many benefits for the city to enrich its cultural landscape and further the sense of identity and pride amongst the residents. Community input was an important factor to the development and success of the public art plan. Multiple focus groups, individual meetings with citizens, business owners, and elected officials were conducted over a period of time. Additionally, an online survey was also conducted in order to connect with as many people throughout the Windsor Heights community as possible. And thank you to the council members who gave their time to that process. Through the feedback, the program goals and location priorities were established. Also, throughout the community input, the idea that Windsor Heights is a connection point for the city and the region, but also that those surveyed would like the public art to create connections. So connection was a huge point for the plan there. The vision of the plan is the public art program envisions a community where public art is one aspect of a city where citizens and visitors can experience a quality artwork as a part of their daily lives. Public art will be integrated into city initiatives, private development, and revitalization efforts. So looking through that, I created ten location priorities based on the feedback received. The number one priority would be at sixty-eight fifty-seven University Avenue, which is right now Blue Agave. That would be a mural along that wall. Inside the larger packet, there are photos of each location as well. Sixty-third and University near the Windsor Heights welcome sign at that corner. Colby Park, Seventieth and University, which is the Casey easement, and then Sixty-sixth and University, which is the circle structure in front of those buildings. So those were the top five. You'll be able to peruse there's that circle structure too there up on the. So there are some items for review. Those location priorities, I welcome any feedback, of course. Any of the program goals, I won't read all of those to you since you have them in your packet, but the things that I want to really call out for the review are specifically the funding sources. So for the public art plan, we need a public art fund. We need to create a fund. It could be potentially at the Greater Des Moines Community Foundation as one location as a possibility. There are many things that would have to be figured out for that specifically, or it could be located with other city funds. One of the things that I'm recommending in the plan is a percent for art program, which would mean eligible developers building in the Windsor Heights city limits should plan to use a percentage of their building overall budget towards public art. One percent of the budget if they plan to coordinate the artwork themselves, or half a percent if they plan to distribute direct money to the public art plan. Windsor Heights Public Art Staff will make efforts to leverage funds for matching grants and other opportunities to maximize the impact and stability of the fund over time. It is recommended that Windsor Heights will allocate five percent each year of the annual cultural and recreation budget for the city towards public art. And additionally, it is recommended that funds from the Urban Renewal Plan are used when art is placed along that corridor. I welcome any questions or feedback around the plan, but that's what I am here to present. This is a rough draft, of course. The final draft will be one that is designed, has many images, is something that will be able to be distributed through the public as a PDF.
Liz, just a real quick question.
You bet.
Who is the Windsor Heights Public Art Staff?
Okay, that's a great question. This would not be something that we would be creating new staff roles for. They would be integrated into the current city staff. Those roles specifically in the plan are shown how they can be integrated. There are many roles that are needed for a plan like this, and they are distributed through city staff as well as through an appointed Public Arts Committee. Windsor Heights used to have a similar committee at one time. It has not met in a number of years, to my understanding, and so it would be bringing back together around ten people that are interested in serving in that capacity.
Second question.
Yeah.
Would you bring into the space the Windsor Heights Foundation?
That's, that is a possibility. If we work with the Community Foundation, that would be actually the way that we most likely would want to funnel those monies. We also want to create opportunities for people and residents to give money, to be creative money, or however donate money to something like this as well. There in the survey, there was certainly an appetite for that, so I think that the foundation would be a great way to use that.
And then there's also the Windsor Heights, keep Windsor Heights beautiful.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, could you talk a little bit more about the private development funding options? You know, I guess what I'm most familiar with is when there's a TIF incentive provided, perhaps there's a requirement that a portion of that or a portion of the project be dedicated towards public art on that structure. Are you saying as a site plan requirement, there would be a public art component required in commercial projects?
Yes. So that would be something that if they are going to be able to use a percent for art, and they will be creating the public art themselves, they would be asked to follow this plan. So basically, knowing what our priorities and our goals are, they would be able to hire a consultant or something along those lines. We've done that for a number of cities when they have had a percent for art. That may not be something that a developer feels that they have the ability to do, and that would be why there's also the option to give just direct monies to the fund.
Similar to how a parkland dedication.
Exactly. Yeah.
Are there examples within the metro that do that right now?
Right now, not in, not within the metro. Obviously, without, through the metro, there are many public art committees. There, we have the foundation in Des Moines. There's a number of ways, but they each set it up a little bit differently. There's not, to my knowledge, an exact percent for art program as such as this.
Liz, would there be preference to Iowa artists?
That's not necessarily something that we would have particularly in the plan. I think that there is an appetite for that, and that could be something that could be really drilled down by the committee as well. It also could be something project per project, depending on what priority that they're going through. There might be great artists specifically in Iowa for that type of project.
Another question.
Yeah, no, that's great. Yeah.
Urbandale, where the city hall is and the library.
Yeah.
I think they rotate some of those sculptures.
They do.
From time to time. Yeah.
Yeah, they do. I will say, in the community feedback, site-specific art was something that people really wanted to see. And so what that specifically means is that if we have a site, we want the artwork to be something that deals with Windsor Heights specifically, or that location specifically. Some of those rotation programs are excellent in bringing in a variety of artwork, but it's not so much the story behind it as well. And so that was certainly some feedback that we received, that it was great that other cities did that, but it may not be right for Windsor Heights.
We do have gnomes, you know.
I have seen the gnomes. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I thank you for, for this and had the opportunity to, you know, have conversations with you initially.
Yeah.
I think that this is a great outline, and I, I really liked the first draft, and.
Thank you.
Thanks for challenging us to think outside the box.
Yeah.
I like to be innovative and, and on the cutting edge. I don't mind being the first in the metro or in the area to do something.
Yeah.
I think it's good, and it keeps challenging others to, to look further. I know folks have, I've commented particularly with Colby Park and our new playground and how it has such, it has an artful look.
Beautiful.
To it. It is beautiful. And, and then certainly the DART stations as well, and how they've really come. So I think that it's like we're at this great jumping off point.
Absolutely.
And so makes sense for us to continue to evolve because we certainly have people's attention.
Yeah.
And they're saying, oh, yeah, we definitely need to include this. So when your first five, I saw, oh, well, they're all along the corridor-ish.
Yes.
Right? And I got that. And I was glad to see in the second half that we have, you know, some on the other, right? The other side of town too, and.
Absolutely. I, I think it's really important to be able to hit all of the corners of Windsor Heights. Certainly, there's a, you know, there are certain locations that may be considered a main drag or something like that, right? But it's absolutely, we want to hit, we want to create points of interest for everywhere in Windsor Heights.
Right, and maybe challenge our, you know, whether it's our existing businesses to think about it too, and how they can.
Absolutely.
You know, engage and work in that space too. And then we have, you know, some homes that have interesting art.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. I think the, the hope, definitely from the feedback that we received, is that there is, Windsor Heights is a special place, and that people absolutely want, yeah, exactly. The residents absolutely want public art throughout the city, and that they would love it to be a connecting point so that they meet new people, they continue to see new people, and they don't necessarily want to be like other cities. That there is something, there's a special sauce in Windsor Heights that they really want to celebrate and hold on to. And, and I think that that is something that this public art plan really can focus on.
That's awesome. Thank you for all your work on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the next steps?
The next steps would be to determine the funding sources and to confirm how we want to be able to put monies toward this. And then, once those are confirmed, we will be able to actually design the report and release it to the community.
I'm gonna thank you for your work. It was great to be a part of.
Yes, thank you.
Conversations for it. And what I think is really special about this is it's parallel to so much of the rest of the work that this council has done the last five or six years of having a plan and not losing focus as elected officials or staff members have changed, that we've had a lot of really great ideas but didn't always have a plan in place for it. And so the fact that we have this, and while we don't have the funds for five amazing projects this, in next budget, unless Rochelle has some great surprise for us here a little bit. We have a plan, and then that empowers us to seek grants and seek funding.
Exactly.
And go out for RFP and actually be able to execute on something. So I think that's the most exciting part is, is having a future vision too. So thank you for helping guide us.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. This is absolutely the foundation. It has a lot of best practices for other cities of a similar size. But then also, we wanted to drill down into what specifically makes Windsor Heights special. So I hope that we achieved both of those things.
We need a, an additional slogan like Keep Boston Weird, but something like Windsor Heights-ish.
Yeah.
So we'll work, I'll work on that.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right, six B, consideration of proposal to install a safe haven baby box at the Windsor Heights Public Safety Building by the Knights of Columbus.
We need a motion?
Yes, please.
Vote to approve.
Chief?
Thank you for the time tonight, James Meese, Fire Chief, Windsor Heights Fire Department. Some time ago, I was, the public safety team was approached by the Knights of Columbus about a safe haven baby box. I wasn't sure what it was. I had a general idea. After conversations with members of the Knights of Columbus, they wanted us to essentially be the flagship department in the area to install a safe haven baby box. Did everybody get the information that I'd sent out? I've got a basic idea of what it is. This is something that, after our discussions, we feel could be little to no cost to the City of Windsor Heights to have it put in, and it sounds like they would be able to maintain the ongoing cost with it over time. It's something that the public safety team and the public safety committee are behind, and it's something that we would like to pursue. We do have Michael Kulik with the Knights of Columbus here to answer questions. He knows much more about these than I do, but I want to make sure I give you an introduction, introduce you to him. I'll be with him to answer any questions that you may have for me, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kulik.
Thank you for an opportunity to be here. Sorry, I'm almost, my cane is almost gone, but I'm the proud owner of a new knee, so I'm.
Congratulations.
Still kind of working on it, but we're doing well. Little bit of voice problem today too, but as the chief said, I am Michael Kulik. I'm an attorney, part-time with Denton's Davis Brown Downtown, of council, but I'm not here in a role as a lawyer. I'm here as, on behalf of the St. Augustine's Knights of Columbus. And I should introduce our grand knight, Paul Mitchell is here too. So I'm, I'm an officer, and we've been working at it. And I also wanted to thank the two chiefs. You guys have been helpful to, to us as we, as we go through it. So I, I was very pleased to see on your agenda a bunch of information from SHBB.org, but I'll try not to bore you too much, but I have some other thoughts and some reasons why we think this is important, and that this is a project that the Knights want to undertake, and we really want to undertake it with Windsor Heights. You may know, but of course, if you abandon the baby, it's a crime. And so in two thousand and three, the Iowa Legislature passed the Safe Haven Baby Act, and its primary purpose is for, for women who do not want or are unable or unwilling to take care of a child, to take it to a hospital. And at that time, they'll fill out forms, pass on adoption, give medical records. A lot of good things come about from that legislation. But we have noticed one other additional problem. And a lot of people, I think there was an article in the Des Moines Register earlier this month, a lot of people have taken their babies into hospitals, and it's a wonderful thing, and we're, we're totally in favor of it. But once in a while, some situation falls through the cracks. Early this year, Fort Dodge, the citizens of Fort Dodge had a real problem. And what happened was a young mother did not want anybody to know that she had a baby. She was apparently, in the consent of the father, put the baby out in the snow, and that was it. The City of Fort Dodge really got together once that information came out. And they located this, and we'll talk about it in a little bit, this nonprofit out of Indiana, Safe Haven Baby Box, or SHBB.org. Lots of good information, and some of it's there. They got together with them, and they actually got a change in the Iowa law so that if we put up a baby box and a baby is delivered into that box, that there's no liability for the mother, there's no liability for those who are working to take the baby where it needs to go, to get it in medical records, and ultimately for adoption. So they had to pat the Fire Chief of Fort Dodge on the back for getting this going in Iowa. We were, kind of wanted to be first in Des Moines. We weren't quite, Mercy's got one up now that maybe some of you have seen. It's beautiful. We support it completely. But sometimes even going to a hospital is a little intimidating. So what this baby box is, it's, it is installed on the wall of your building. I like fire departments because, again, I think that's less intimidating than a hospital, but you have police and fire, all the better, because you also have people that could help us on the staff. So the project really is to take a box, which is temperature-controlled, camera in it, sends out signals if the door is open by somebody outside, sends out another signal if the door is closed, which means it's locked, and there's something on the bassinet that's in there. Remember, it's temperature-controlled, and we've made a commitment, and I don't, it's, it's up to you folks in your role, but the idea would be for somebody to be on hand from your police or fire department to take the baby out within five minutes. But the sensor does send, so DHS will get notification, nine-one-one rings as well. We're happy with the mother. Close the door, locked up, no, no more interaction needed, nor wanted, really. And once the baby is checked out, it would be put up for adoption. So we think a lot about this new statute that Iowa has, and what's going on in Fort Dodge, and we'd like that to go on in Windsor Heights. We'd like you to be kind of the community leader in putting in a box, operating the box, being able to tell people in the world what a great thing it is, and the first baby's life you save, you'll be crying all over your next meeting. And it's also interested in saving the life of that baby, but the mother too. The mother has severe crisis issues and problems. The second situation, and I won't go into detail, was in Des Moines. A young teenage girl got pregnant. She couldn't tell her dad, couldn't tell her mother, didn't know what to do, didn't have any of the information, which through this would be. Didn't have any of the information which through this would be available. Had the baby in a closet, put the baby in the closet. The baby died. She's charged with a felony and her health is completely ruined because she didn't get medical care at the time. So we're also very concerned about the mothers as well as the babies as we go through this process. Okay. And you can ask questions anytime you'd like. So it's really the safety of the baby and the mother. And now we have legal backing for the mother, for your community. If you agree to put in the box, it's protected now by the statute civilly and criminally. So let me tell you a little bit about what we would be affiliating with this, shbb.org. It's, you can check it out easily. And again, we have the information packet attached and it's terrific organization. Started by a woman who, as a baby was left out on the front step and survived. And that's their goal, to save the lives of babies. And they started in Indiana. Most of the boxes up today are in Indiana. They have a lot of backing behind them. Most of it's good, a little bit, I'm not so sure because they have a lot of rules that we have to follow. And they want things done right when it comes to fundraising, which we'll talk about, and how it's operated and how it's tested. Once you put the box in, it's tested immediately. It's tested seven times to make sure it works. It's tested, Fort Dodge tests theirs once a week. And then this organization will come in and test the box once a year. As I said earlier, if a mother is willing to take her child into the hospital, that's great. We don't need to be involved, but as I say, that doesn't always happen. This organization also is very strong on awareness, publicity, letting people know that there is this alternative for them. They actually will, they'll put up billboards. One of their slogans is no shame, no name, no blame. And I like it. I mean, you shouldn't need it, but there are situations where you really do. They'll go into schools and put on a program. They'll do things publicly. They'll send out brochures. They're very, very active because awareness is a very major part of what's being done here to make sure that people both know that there are some choices, but also know that, excuse me, that this is a great one. They'll come in and train. They have a 24/7 hotline crisis for any woman that needs help. They, let's see. And they're the ones that help put the box together, the box. And once we put a deposit down, then we will get a contract. That would be for the city. And as we've indicated to all of you as the Knights, we've agreed to fundraise to make this work. So if a check goes in, you get a contract. They really call it a lease of the box, but your council would want to look at that. And I'd be happy to talk with them about how it works. There are some fundraising rules in these materials. They lay it out pretty well. There are some activities that they'll conduct. They'll do training. If your employees want some training, they'll come in and do some training with you. It's, it's a, and then they've designed the box. If you have somebody locally here who would like to construct it and install it on your wall, but it doesn't need access from outside and access from inside. We like it to be not on the front street. We like it to be a quiet area so somebody might be willing to come up and drop off a baby. So, and again, in that are sensors, cameras, all kinds of things to help that baby survive. And then we expect a rapid response and then go through this awareness campaign. The Knights, you know, we're the Knights of Columbus at St. Augustine's. We are really in favor of this project and we would lead funding. We'll probably come to your neighbors at St. Teresa's and we'll probably come to your neighbors in West Des Moines to get a little fundraising. But in like Fort Dodge, some of the local people want to contribute, want to be involved in the fundraising. So by no means would we prevent that. We'd be happy for it. But now with our grand knight here, I guess I've committed this, haven't I? But we'll raise the money. It'll take a little while, but we'll raise the money. It's anticipated that the box is about $15,000. Construction installation about five. There are usually some other little expenses. We don't know how much. I think that Fort Dodge raised 30, I believe. And there are a small annual fee for testing and other things that would be a part of it. So, you know, we'd probably be talking about, if that total's 20, we'd probably be talking about raising 25,000 or, or maybe a little more if, if, if need be. You might have some questions on that. I don't know if you do, but frankly, I'm from a small community in Iowa. He's from a small community in Ireland, I think. We like the idea of working with a smaller community, a smaller suburb in the greater Des Moines area. We like to show some of these larger organizations that we know what we're doing. And I'd be happy if others would add boxes. I've, I've got no problem with that. But when the first baby survives, I'm going to come visit you. So I'll stop now and say, what questions, what concerns do you have?
Thank you for, for bringing this to us in Windsor Heights. The Public Safety Committee, we were really excited to hear about it when the chiefs brought it to us at our last meeting. And it sounds like a great service and we really appreciate the Knights sponsoring it and helping to fundraise for it. I didn't see any mention of, but maybe it's covered in the training and support that the organization has for what happens if the parents stick around or if there's a change of heart that happens during that and thinking about our, our public safety workers and dealing with distraught parents and stuff. So do you, do you happen to know if that's covered in the, in the training?
Once they put the baby in the bassinet and close the door, they have no more legal rights to the baby at all. And it's a strong recommendation of SHBB that no further communication occur with them. Now, we know naturally that there would be some concern and we could maybe help you answer that. These, I'm, I'm very pleased with the folks in Indiana. They've gone through these now and they're moving out to other states during this process. And I'm sure they've had those situations, but it is as if the baby is up for adoption.
So this is more, I guess, comments first off. I would ask that we make sure we don't have any cameras on whatever side of the building that we install it, just so that that isn't a deterrent from a parent making that decision. And that also that we list it on Google Maps. So that way if somebody types in safe haven or baby box, that it will, you know, you can have the pin or whatever drop there too. I do see on their website, sorry, I should say, I did pull up their website and they do have a locator, which is great. And it does link to Google Maps and Apple Maps to the building. But specifically if, if someone doesn't know the website and they're just searching in that moment of desperation that they can find what they need. So thank you.
I'll, I'll allow public comment.
Okay, we're somewhat.
Hold on. Yeah, I'll.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I think, I think he's letting council finish. Is that the idea?
I'm going to let council finish and then I'll allow public comment.
So I just.
I'll add a personal comment from myself. There's a lot of political issues today going back and forth. I can't think of anybody on any side of the political spectrum who wouldn't say this is a great idea. Let's save the life of the babies. Let's help mothers in distress. You know, if they go through this without help, they'll be scarred in many ways for life. So I think it's just a positive win-win for the entire situation. Go ahead.
Logistically, so I understand that you would do the fundraising for the installation and I understand the money upfront. So there is ongoing costs. Are, is that going to fall to the city then?
We know that there's a $500 annual cost. There shouldn't be a lot more after that if you guys could do your own testing, but we'd work it out. We're, we want this, we want to help you do it.
Just one spaghetti dinner of fundraising, right? You guys can. Fish fry, there we go.
Fish bake.
I just want to say thank you, as Lauren did, for thinking of us. I agree that I think Windsor Heights is a great place in the, in the metro and we're easily accessible, I think, for a lot of reasons. It makes a lot of sense here, other than we have a great team of professionals that are going to be ready to respond. Kind of fits into as well. I know Lauren, you just mentioned, you know, if we do have somebody who's in crisis and needs help with our new outreach that, you know, with Urbendale and the social work folks, it's, we'll have hopefully some support in that space as well if needed. But I just, I'm, I'm really excited. I was in the, I was not in the legislature, but I lobbied in the legislature when this, when the safe haven bill passed. And so I, I very much remember that and know that this has, has saved the lives. The law in and of itself has saved the lives. And anything that we can do to be a part of it, to make sure that, that folks in desperate situations have options is critical. And as a mom of adopted parent or of adopted children, I think it's always helpful to have that outlet. And people don't always know or realize the situation they might be in. So the more options folks have, I think the better. And I think we, I do think we're the best community to put this box in. So, thank you.
I thought one more thing I wanted to add. I also appreciate that the safe haven baby box will market it because as, as a Catholic whose kids go to Catholic, kids go to Catholic school, we're not the best at marketing. I feel like the Catholic Church, we did a lot of our marketing in the Crusades and then we kind of got that out of our system. And so I'm really glad that this organization will help market it too.
Yeah, if you sneak the name of your church to us, we'll be sure they.
St. Teresa's is broke. I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll remember that. Besides that, you're, you're available when I'm out of time to come in at five o'clock or 4:30.
There you go.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments?
You know, another thought, I guess. You know, statistics may not show a ton of children's lives saved, but we don't know the impact it has on mothers that take their baby into a hospital or take care of that baby in some fashion when we've given them awareness. And so to me, it's much more than just saving the life of a baby in a box. It's saving other lives as well. You probably heard too much from me by now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
We good?
You're good.
Thank you.
There's public comment?
I was just going to say that.
Well, you can, you can come up to the microphone and speak.
Just because we have people online.
Yeah.
Name and address.
I'm Rob Dinhardt. I'm also with Knights, one of the officers. But I was just going to say that we're somewhat bound by Iowa law. That's the reason why, once they put the baby in, it's given up immediately because that's part of the way the law was written. Of course, the law can be amended, but right now there's not a way to do an open adoption per se. There is of course a cost that the fire department is willing to bear and that's the ongoing cost of having somebody there 24/7. So essentially, I don't know if it's protocol, some fire departments to maybe have everyone go out all at once. There would have to be one person that would have to be left behind, if you will, always to be able to be there. So that is an ongoing cost. We would be willing to help with the, the marketing and the costs of Google optimization and those types of things. And yes, of course, you do have to have a really well-lit, easy to find place to drop it, but not, to have it be less intimidating. So the site of a fire department works really good. Mercy's has theirs from a back alley, but it was a back alley that wasn't well-lit originally. And so they, they lit it up a lot better. So we think it's a great thing. And once again, it's, you know, regardless of quantity, I think that it's something that can get speed in it. But I guess more important than the quantity of children that would be saved, I think every single life is, is sacred, if you will. And, and if we can save, if Windsor Heights can save one life, that's tremendous. And Knights are really happy to help in any way we can.
And, and just so we're clear that the, there's a five minutes, the, the expectation is that the baby is removed from the bassinet within five minutes. Cause I know that we've got lean staffing, but we also have our police department housed here. And then also I know that I-911 knows how to get ahold of, for example, Jason or, or whoever. So even if the, all of our fire department does go out on the call.
There's other people.
Yeah, that can be here within five minutes.
The information I read was five minutes. And with our standing automatic aid agreement, it fits in really well because we have Clive and Urbendale and even West Des Moines that are extremely close. So on the rare chance that there's nobody for fire or PD here, which means there's a pretty big event in Windsor Heights, that we would just request mutual aid from Clive, Urbendale or West Des Moines and possibly, probably not Des Moines. So.
Chief, can you make sure that some folks from Clive, Urbendale, West Des Moines are included in the training?
Oh, yeah.
When you guys go through it too.
Absolutely. Part of integrating this, if this is something we move forward with, is extensive training in-house. We're going to have to adjust our, our protocols, our procedures and getting that out to our neighboring departments. So they at least have an idea of how it functions, making sure they have access to our building, which Clive currently does. They have our Knox key so they can come in and respond. But again, there, there's some logistical stuff that we will have to work on, absolutely. But I'll make sure that all that's taken care of.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Hey, it's your, it's your knee, so.
You left your cane in. I was going to have to bring it.
The Fort Dodge Fire Department have developed their own rules of operation. And they're, the employees are so excited about it that they're all willing to submit to the tests and, and how they operate and, and do the rules. And Chief Hergenreiter has given us his rules. So we're happy to pass that on to you if that would be helpful for, for your.
It would.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. So I think the consideration is just, I think it's sort of a blanket consideration, but I think there's a significant amount of detail that needs to be.
Looking for direction to move forward, subject to receiving the funds and working on a finalized agreement between the Donnies Knights of Columbus and the City of Windsor Heights.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, channel.
Thank you. All right. Not so exciting here, chief. Come on up.
Be the first in the metro, right?
Yeah.
I'm kind of ready. What'd you say?
The immediate metro.
Yeah.
As far as firearms.
Good, because the only other ones are first.
We welcome.
Six C, consideration of participation in mine group and the suburban emergency response team.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, Pete Roth, uh, City of Windsor Heights Police Department. Uh, before you is, um, two documents that, uh, will authorize us to be able to participate with the Mid-Iowa Narcotics Enforcement Task Force and the Suburban Emergency Response Team, or CERT. Um, our participation in the, in the task force would be a rejoin, uh, back in the early 2000s. We had investigators assigned to the task force. Um, I believe Hector Arias was our last, was our last, uh, person on, on the, on the task force, and we've been out ever since. Uh, we have been fully staffed now for almost about a year now, and we are looking to repurpose one of our open detective positions from our current staff to, to, uh, participate with this, with this group. Uh, there'd be no additional costs. There's no salary. We already have the person. We just want to repurpose, purpose that. And, um, our participation in CERT, uh, would be, uh, from Officer Jax. He went through their, um, training, training program or their training selection process, which includes a physical test, firearms training, and a written test, and he passed all that. So really before you is, is a document to allow us to do that. Again, no cost. He will still be on patrol and, uh, just train, um, when they, when they do regular training, just off shift. Sorry, I'm gonna cough. I'm, I'm just trying to fight this, this cough coming up here. This has been kind of a couple-year process for the police department. We've worked on this ever since I got here. I know the CERT involvement was kind of started by Chief McCluskey before he left. And the mine involvement, we have been kind of trying to deal with, um, ever increasing certain, certain type of specific crimes in our community involving narcotics and also some vice crimes that we're just not able to do it by ourselves. Uh, participation with the mine unit would allow us to have some collaboration with, with another, other bunch of investigators and, and organizations, and that'll allow us to collaborate with them and actually sit on the board with mine and have a voice in that, in that organization, too. So really, um, the, the information is listed out for you in front of you. Approval of this request will enhance our, you know, our department's capabilities, strengthen regional partnerships, and benefit both our officers and the community. Uh, additionally, uh, these programs may create further grant opportunities for us because we'll be involved in a multidisciplinary, uh, group. And, uh, it also will, um, help us support some department initiatives that we've been trying to work on. So again, sharing is caring around here, and we, we need to be able to start doing that more. And, uh, really, uh, for investigator being exposed to a task force environment, they will get some really specialized training with search warrants, working with, uh, with attorneys more closely, and also be open to a lot more, um, incidents that they may not see here in Windsor Heights to gain, to gain experience. Again, it's a rotational type of assignment. They would be there for three years, up to five, uh, and then rotate back to, to patrol, and then someone else would be eligible for that, so. Sorry, I kind of stumbled through that. I've, I've been just trying to fight this cough, so.
Questions for Chief?
I think it sounds like a great opportunity.
It's, it's interesting that the organization with the acronym MINE is the one for sharing information, but, um, maybe some marketing help on that.
It's government. We don't really have a lot of creativity when it comes to acronyms. We'll work on that.
And Chief, so who does MINE answer to?
There's a board. Right now, Chief Johansson of Urbandale is the board chairman, so the agency heads all represent the board. Operationally, there are supervisors from the Polk County Sheriff's Office, and I believe Urbandale has a sergeant there that operationally have supervisory roles. The investigator still reports back to the, the department and still follows our policies regarding time off and all that other stuff, so.
Any other questions for Chief Roth? Hearing now and roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Seven A reports, Ms. Harms.
Thank you all. Um, we had the, uh, MAC last week and so had an opportunity to, uh, participate in that and get an update on the work that the communications folks are doing. Adam, I presume that you were involved in the communications work or no for? Yes. Okay, great. Sorry. It wasn't trying to call. I was just like, yes, okay, good, good, good. Um, so excited for that work. I think that there's gonna be a really good, I think, um, bringing together the communications professionals, um, is going to, um, put forward some really good, uh, um, outcomes for the metro and the region on communicating with our residents and showcasing really a united front, which is sometimes what we need more than anything else. So excited about that. Um, and then I had to unfortunately jump off, so I know Mike was there for the rest of the meeting, but, um, I don't know. I think that's about all that. At a budget meeting, too, and there somewhere, didn't we? Yeah, we had, there was a budget meeting, too. Time flies when you're having fun. That's all I got, I think.
Campbell?
Um, I attended the Bravo Gala. Uh, it was, uh, the second year chaired by Liz Lidgett. She did a phenomenal job, and it's always fun to be third wheel to Susan and Darren. Thanks for letting me tag along. Uh, and then shout out to, uh, Public Works for handling all of the snow and the bitter cold and the changing forecast, because I thought we were gonna get snow Saturday. It changed again, so, um, thank you to all of them. That's it.
Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last week I attended, uh, I sat on the board for Icon Water Trails, and we were able to meet in their new facility, which is 5,000 West Town Parkway. It's a really a state-of-the-art facility, very, very nice, uh, great boardroom. But, um, Icon's been around now for 10 years, and there's been a number of things. They've raised millions of dollars for all kinds of projects that are going to be really important to the economic development of, uh, not only the metro but beyond. Uh, this year, according to their time plan, we're going to be seeing, uh, the FLUR Drive, um, construction started. The Merle Hay construction started. Scott Avenue construction should be complete for Icon. Uh, the Clive Green Belt Access Point should be complete. Uh, there's going to be ribbon cutting at Walker Johnson in Urbandale, ribbon cutting in West Des Moines, uh, the, uh, Raccoon River Access. And hopefully, uh, we will move forward with the Windsor Heights, uh, opportunity. I was asked to give a report to the board about the $125,000 grant that we received. Uh, and they indicated that not only are they anxious to get that going, but also they'll provide signage at the, at the site. So our residents and, and folks that are visiting Colby Park can see, uh, what's in the future. On, uh, Friday of this past week, I, on Valentine's night, what, what better way to enjoy Valentine's than ride shotgun with the Windsor Heights Police Department? And, uh, Andrew Neeson, we had a, a great opportunity to get to know each other. It was a wonderful experience, and thank you, Chief, for, uh, helping set that up. On Sunday, I was out delivering new resident packets, uh, to folks. And what was interesting about that was that of, of the 10 packets that I delivered on Sunday, only one was south of University Avenue. Everybody else was, uh, on the north side of university. Um, and no one's ever home. Nobody ever answers the door. Uh, uh, this Wednesday at 10 o'clock, we're going to be recording, uh, our first podcast for Windsor Heights. Uh, it's going to focus on 73rd Street. And, uh, Saturday is talk with officials over at the Urbandale Chamber at 9 o'clock. And this Saturday, following that event, it's coffee with council at grounds for celebration. That would conclude my report, sir.
I'm sure Des Moines residents will be happy to hear construction on FLUR again. Yeah. Mr. Jones?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Skiris?
I apologize for my, uh, lateness, my tardiness. I was at the Masonic Lodge giving, um, a talk. They had, uh, some presidential award winners, and I was asked to give a speech there. So did that real quick and came over here. Um, there, it's been a, a busy, busy few weeks here. Um, Thursday, the 6th, I did pop-ins, uh, with the chamber, which was great because most of them were Windsor Height business, Windsor Heights businesses. Um, so always a good time to, to get in and, and talk with people. Um, had Bash there at Exit Realty, uh, at 70th and Hickman, and got to hear all about their, how they made the building from basically where they taken a whole bunch of money to the Realty Place. So that was interesting. Uh, I have MWA meeting, um, the, this Wednesday. And then on Friday, we have special events meeting. Um, I received some information from Tiffany just about kind of the sponsorships, and we are down a little bit in our sponsorships this year. Um, but, um, I had a few, uh, meetings with some of the TRC, the, uh, Total Resource Campaign volunteers to kind of help them promote our events, uh, to the, the businesses that they were talking to. So hopefully some of those will come through. Um, and then, uh, the, um, Wake Up Windsor Heights, that was canceled. Um, I did send out that email to everybody just in case, um, you hadn't signed up, just to make sure. The next one is, uh, March 13th. So if you are going to attend, um, make sure you, uh, register ahead of time. Not only do you get the emails if things change, if location or whatever, um, but there also is a cap on the number of people. So, um, I can't remember where this one is gonna be at. And I don't have it down on my calendar very well. Oh, it's at Premium Solutions. So it's, um, it's definitely a smaller space, so I think it's limited to about 25 people. So if you're gonna attend, make sure you sign up so that there's spots. And that's it.
AJ?
Uh, there's been a few water main breaks recently with the cold weather, including one today at 63rd and Hickman. Um, not sure if that's been resolved yet, but, uh, Public Works has been out there dropping some salt, uh, to help the DOT. Uh, as Councilmember Libby mentioned, uh, we did have, uh, Adam working with Icon and Mid-American to release the press release for our water access. So I look forward to some further information from our engineering team on that in the future. And then there are two paper handouts on the dais here today. Uh, one is just inventory of the city vehicles, uh, for your information as we're talking through the budget. And the second is an example of the proposed tax notice, uh, the state's mandated. Um, this has the city's current fiscal year, uh, tax rate in there and the next year's currently proposed, uh, tax rate in there. This will be mailed out in about a month. Um, and you can see just as it, last year, uh, there's been a couple modifications, but the big one this year is that there's a presumed 10% increase in assessed value. So if you look at the residential side there on the left, uh, and you look at your estimated taxes, uh, it would be shown to go up from $660 to 741. Uh, this notice doesn't really give you the complete information, so I would expect you'll probably get some comments from residents trying to further understand this. Adam's working on a webpage on our website as well to kind of talk people through of, uh, how the property tax system works, uh, in conjunction with the rollback and assessed values. Um, but just wanted to bring this to your attention, as I suspect some residents will be commenting, um, that their property taxes will go up. Well, the levy rate is proposed to go down this year. Uh, it's not a reevaluation year, so the assessed value should be held fairly constant as well. So reality might be a little bit different than what folks see in this notice when it goes out, uh, in mid-March. Shell, have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Well.
Mayor, I did forget that we actually have these, if anybody wants to take a look at them, the special events that packet that Lori came up with, that the, uh, TRC sponsors are also, uh, they have the ability to take from the chamber, and it's kind of a promotion of all of the special events. So we kind of updated with some new pictures and, uh, updated the dates and little Santa Claus stickers and, you know.
Santa Claus sticker is definitely not covering up a typo, if that's what she thought.
It just fits in.
It just fits in.
If anybody wants to take a look, they're, you're.
Uh, adjourn to work session.
So moved.
Back in. Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Work session of the Windsor Heights City Council, Monday, February 17th, 2025. Roll call.
Susan Skiris? Justin Jones?
Here.
Michael Libby?
Here.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Item two, review city council budget slash CIP slash ERP for Shell or AJ.
Um, I'll go first, probably last as well. Um.
Why don't you come up here? Yeah, you do. Well, I mean, there's people online, so.
Or you can stand at the podium, but come.
Yeah, you can stand at the podium, or you can sit here. Aaron won't mind. Yeah.
Isn't he? Now, done. Okay, so this is a weird seat to be sitting in, let me tell you. I did want to get just a little bit of an update. When they were, she was talking about the art plan. She was saying 5% of the budget of culture and recreation. If we've looked at the 26 budget, the culture and recreation is $454,000. 5% of that would be $22,000. Um, but what we do have, I mean, I don't have an extra 22 sitting around. I could find it, I suppose. But Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful does have $14,723.72 in a savings account and a CD. So that's an option. There is no, there's no, nobody that meets.
Was that their money or, or money?
Well, it's, it's the city's money.
Okay.
The city is audited on it, and it is ours to allocate. Allocate. So that is an option.
I haven't seen a recent agenda for the organization, but I did sit down with them maybe nine months ago, and they had a meeting at Hy-Vee, so maybe worth trying to get them together and, and see what their plans are. They've also contributed to the, the flower plantings in front of, uh, Blue Gade, uh, as well. I think it was their project last year, but.
I asked if they would want to attend Earth Day, and they said that they had nobody that was involved in the organization to do it. So, oh, I don't, that was just what was said to me. So I don't know if that was just one person's thoughts or if that's what the other thoughts were. They're just not going to attend Earth Day.
So what was the dollar money?
Uh, $14,723.72. Now, there could be some interest on that that I haven't accounted for yet, but there you go. Um, I just thought it was interesting. And then, um, if that art plan, if that's what you guys want to do, um, and the 5% figure, um, is what you want to work with, um, we can always utilize lost. Um, we can always put that into their, our, we can do it now if you want. We can add that in and, um, reduce the amount of lost by $22,000 to go to future streets. So that's an option.
The other piece that's hanging out there as well is the potential for the mural. Uh, there is a draft development agreement through TIF, uh, with the intent to spend that through the Economic Development Fund. So if that were to be the first project, um, to move forward, which is an if, um, that one could be used out of that funding source and development agreement potentially.
Will we also be looking at grants for that? Because Lauren and I sat through something together.
At League of Cities?
Yes.
Yep.
And, you know, there was Sherman Williams, I think it was, that had, um, a significant grant that they were willing to give and then like provide paint and variety of different things. Um, through the League of Cities is what the.
I've got some notes for it.
It was Cedar, the City of Cedar Rapids, I think it was.
Cause I think.
Cause it was at the league conference, yeah, in Cedar, and I think it was the Cedar Rapids, uh, Public Art Committee or they were the one that gave that presentation.
Well, this was in Johnston, I think, when Lauren, but it was.
I was thinking of the.
But I think it was there, too.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have to fully fund this initially to move it forward? Do we, can we every year allocate money towards it where every couple of years we've got enough to go out for proposal? What's, what's the strategy that usually goes with a, an art, art plan like this?
I think some of it would be as opportunities arise. I think some of it would be as opportunities arise, if you have development occurring. Bravo does have a currently at least an annual grant that you can apply for. Some matching funds either through TIF or lost or other allocations would be a way to approach that. So I think, yeah, perhaps a sinking fund might be an opportunity or putting into the CIP, which I think there is draft in there right now, a schedule of every other year, every three years to to fund an initiative as a standalone, even if we don't receive a grant fund, maybe a good way to approach that.
I was gonna say that. I don't think that it necessarily has to be five percent. I don't know that, but I think we can look towards other options. I obviously, what I, creating a fund would be ideal or creating an account that people can give contribution to. Because that's one thing that people can do. Also, like I, there's, I think about like for us, like Thrive Ent has, we can give our Thrive and Choice dollars and that's something that people can choose to do. And as long as you have a fund for it to go into, then you can make a contribution and they match that. So you can, there's different opportunities for people and different ways that people could give contributions as long as they have a place for an external place for it to, to go to. So I think that community fund certainly would go a long ways. And then it's just a matter of communicating that, right? Like letting people know that it's there. And two, I think if people wanna, you know, put it in their wills or whatever, those are all options or make a contribution. Um, as long as they know that it's there and what we've, we've got something to shoot, maybe we launch it in, you know, in line with when we when and if we get the mural done, that might be a great way to, to kind of launch that. And then as monies either become available or we say we're going to put this many dollars or this percent of a budget in it each year, whether it's from lost or whatever, then you, we can build on that. And as those dollars become available through that or other grants, I think that, I think that's the way to go. I don't think we have to, you know, think we're going to do one every year. I don't think we, you know, have to, because these are going to have different values too. So I think it's what we decide we want to make it over time.
I know through my work, I can do like matching donations, but it usually has to be a nonprofit. Is that something that we want to explore, like creating a fund that's nonprofit? Is that a nightmare? I don't know.
I think that's what she was proposing.
Yeah, through the community.
Okay.
Then it would be a tax write-off for anybody.
We're not a five oh one C three, but you can, right, you can deduct it from your, it is tax deductible, a donation to the city. But from that perspective, I'm not sure. So the the ones that I'm aware of are given to public safety, those were specifically tax deductible. Not sure about just funding our plan or something like that. So I'd have to look into that. But it makes sense if you would do it through a different type of fund.
Well, I think that like, if we do look at something like the Community Foundation, because I've done um, accounts with them before, is that that would be a great way to do it because then not only would be open to potentially people in our community, but other people that want to give money for arts or whatever. So they can say, oh, Windsor Heights has this fund. So it's, and, and then you can get those other external allocation types of groups that say, oh, I want to give this year to the Windsor Heights Art Program or whatever.
Perfect.
So I would, I would highly recommend that we look at an external account like that.
Yeah, that makes complete sense. Anyway, I wanted to bring that up, that there is some dollars from Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful. I'm assuming as this goes on, we'll figure out what they do and how they want to use that money and.
But maybe they'll want to put it towards art.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know, I'll be a hundred percent honest. I'm not sure if it's a committee's ability to spend those dollars. I think it's council's ability to spend those dollars. So I think we'll have to figure that out.
I think they've all, they, in the past, what I recall is they would come and request allocation or, you know, we were going to do this, this is the requested, but it hasn't happened for a while. So.
Hasn't happened since I've been on, that I can remember.
It hasn't happened since I've been here. So. Yeah.
It used to be really active, but haven't for a while.
So.
Like most things, volunteer driven.
Yeah, volunteer. Um, I, so I just was gonna just do a real quick again through the executive summary. Um, we talked about a last time that a decrease of three cents to the total tax levy rate. Um, so it would decrease to fourteen point two zero nine five eight per thousand. And then there, there were a few changes to the way that the twenty FY twenty-five expenses were, were handled. So we're going to have a new line for TIF rebates and it's a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budget item, but it, that line, all those expenses will be reimbursed by TIF. So it does make, it makes things, makes things look a little off, but, but it, we, I mean, we, it's not that we have to, but we should because that makes the most sense. Uh, the Stormwater Fund shows an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand for the Wilshire Boulevard Stormwater Project. And then obviously wages and benefits show increases in all departments and union employees are set to increase as per applicable labor contracts. Capital investments projects, I think we've actually been through those quite a bit. Uh, the ERP purchases, the guys actually did those, which was really nice. And guys, you're gonna have to step it up because man, Andy made you guys put you in shame with his slideshow. It was just gonna say, so true, so true, so true. Um, local option sales tax, and I'm very conservative with my estimates. Adam and I have talked about this. It might be a little more than the one thousand or one million, five hundred and forty thousand that I estimated, but if it is, then we can always allocate at that time. Well.
What was it this year?
Uh, this year was one million, four hundred, forty thousand. And I think they're saying like, they're saying upwards of an eleven percent increase. I get it. I, I can see that, but it.
Prices are up.
Yeah. So, so then your, your prices are up, so your taxes are still. But some people might pull back on their spending. So anyway, uh, we've got thirty thousand of that going to the community center, sixty-nine, five, six, sixty-nine thousand, five to the library. Uh, we're going to fund the equipment replacement plan, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, Dart sixteen, eight, and then Seventy-Fourth Street Reconstruction, one point, one million. And we do have an unallocated balance or will at the end of FY twenty-six, a four point two million in the future street projects funds. Now, let me tell you, Adam has his, he's got all kinds of plans for those dollars. So.
Hoping he hasn't spent them three times over.
He always wants any money I come up with. He wants, he wants it. Um, do you guys want to come up and talk about your public safety budget?
Take it or leave it? Is that?
Or not. It's fine.
Let's be quick.
Uh, so, uh, as Rochelle mentioned, salaries are going up and uh, other than myself and Lieutenant Jones now, uh, we do have full-time staff. Our part-time staff is based off the union pay scale as well. So as full-time go up, sort of part-time. In training allowances dues, I did look at our clothing allowance budget, which gets uniforms on all of our staff. Historically, we've been under that and I've taken steps buying bulk orders from a local clothing shop to kind of defray the cost. What we'd been doing historically was getting à la carte, like going to Galls or Range Masters. And I ended up ordering bulk stock. I cut the price in half of most of the clothes we wear. Um, and it, it is a local company. It's a professional products. I think they're off Hickman. I don't know. I've never been there. Mark Merner handles all that for me. Uh, but with that being said, I, I went ahead and chopped off two thousand dollars off of a thirteen thousand dollar budget. Uh, and I hate to be too optimistic, but I still plan on being under that quite a bit. Uh, and then taking a look at our next budget and reevaluating and hopefully going down from there. Slight increases in motor vehicle operations, that's fuel. Annual testing, very slight increase. Uh, so we get pump tests done every year. A SEBA compressor system gets tested every year, slight increases there. Um, the one that's big as far as a big percentage is communications. Um, it went from twelve hundred to twenty-two seventy. I'm figuring in Lieutenant Brian Jones having a phone and a phone stipend, so he can be reached at any time, uh, just like me, except when I go on vacation and it's gotta be him. But, uh, in a leadership position, I want to make sure that he's available. Obviously, uh, phone stipend. Vehicle repairs, um, on one sixty, which is our ambulance budget, five hundred dollar increase from seven thousand dollars. Our ambulance is getting older. We just ordered one. I actually think I did decrease. Yeah, I decreased our same budget on fire. We're getting a brand new engine. So I anticipate the engine repair costs being gone for at least a year with the warranty. So we did increase the dog expense budget from fifteen hundred to three thousand. She's getting older and we wanted to better represent long-term the, the investment we've made with our loving puppy. So we did, we did increase that. I hope we don't have to use it, but um, slight increase in operating supplies. Slight decrease in fixtures and furnitures. We just weren't spending money. I bought several new items that I don't anticipate needing to replace. So brought that down. Medical supplies, costs just keep going up. I keep on Brian Jones about, he orders all the supplies, like, let's be, let's be watching that. Uh, but we didn't increase that five hundred dollars. Other than what I've mentioned, I've kept everything else at the status quo. I feel very confident that I've done everything I can to be conservative with the taxpayers' money. So are there any questions?
Just want to say thank you for replacing your totaled vehicle with a used similar, similar vintage and lower miles uh, used vehicle. Um, I think that is like the perfect example of Windsor Heights being good stewards of.
Yeah. And I think that's a great bridge for later down on the ERP when it is time to replace my car or that car. And then we ended up, I was anticipating nine thousand and the total insurance check was twelve. Now, keep in mind, we still have to outfit, uh, we don't have to outfit radios because we got brand new radios and that cost is already figured in to the grant. So that's taken care of. And then we got to get MDB put in, minor stuff. So.
You also have an opportunity to sell it back at a profit to Clive, right?
Yeah. So unfortunately for our, our Captain Blake Boyle and Fire Marshal, he wrecked Clive's car.
I wondered.
Yeah, it was the day after we bought car three, or car three hundred from Clive. But I did, I did text him and say, do you guys need to borrow a command vehicle? Got one you can borrow for short term. And it's still got your name on it.
Look at us being good stewards.
Yep. Hey, I was just trying to pay it forward.
Western suburb money, they're fine.
Chief, just as a general reminder, I know you don't have specifics on it at this point, but last year we did institute in our fee schedule fees for uh, the most common medicines, uh, that we disperse from the ambulance and then also have restructured with Rick Rowe, how we do reimbursements. I don't know if you can provide any detail at this point.
Yeah. So, uh, we did add to our fee schedule. There were some things we weren't charging for. I did contact our billing agency. They said it's way too soon to, to see what kind of cost benefit it's going to give us. We know it's going to give us some. I don't expect it to be anything huge, but we don't have near enough data. They don't have near enough data to provide me with, you know, what we're going to get. Row Consulting is doing our GMT billing. Um, we moved away from Public Consulting Group. They charge nine percent and I think historically a hundred and fifty thousand, does that sound right? So they're getting nine percent of that. Um, gives you a rough idea what we were paying them and, uh, Row Consulting does it for five thousand dollars flat rate. Um, and he's getting us a little bit more than we did historically. So it's been a great decision to move with Row Consulting. He offers us great services, citywide, blood planning, all that stuff. So, yeah.
And he's really easy to work with.
Yes, very easy to work with. And quite honestly, with Row Consulting, my workload, hate to sound selfish, but my workload with the GMT stuff, he cut in half because he has access to our reporting software and a lot of the data that I had to mine for, he, he takes care of it with that consulting. So, uh, it's, it's a great relationship with him.
Only question for me is how old is our puppy now? How old is Amber?
Um, eight.
Yeah.
I think she's eight. I've been here.
She's had some medical concerns too, hasn't she?
Yeah, I've been here about ten years. All, they're all self-induced. He eats something she's not supposed to be eating. So we have an SOG on the firehouse dog now. So when the crews leave, she goes in the kennel. When she goes outside, she has to be on a leash. So we, we changed operation to make sure we're, uh, taking care of her the right way.
There you go.
Uh, it's a firehouse. We don't need her running around eating corn cobs when the crew goes on a call. So it's nothing but trouble. And money.
And money.
Yeah.
Thank God she's cute.
Yeah.
That she is.
She is popular.
She is, more popular than any of us and that's okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
My girl don't care about anything else. Where's Amber?
Well, good evening again. It's Pete again.
Are you sure?
Yeah. Well, like, like Chief Me said, a majority of our budget is salary and benefits. Most of that is set through contract or other agreements. We did have some moderate increases as the salaries go up, our overtime expenses go up. So we wanted to kind of have a little bit of cushion in that. Not, you know, not by much. Uh, longevity goes up, of course, the PTO payout amount kind of has to reflect that liability as well. Uh, we really tried to, uh, start cutting some costs that we weren't utilizing over the last couple of years. So in our, in our, in our, um, training budget, the academy costs went down. We always kind of had an academy listed in that. So we, we took that down about five thousand dollars, uh, which would be about twenty-five percent decrease in that line, just because the academy is cheaper and we don't plan on having anybody go to the academy next year. Motor vehicles with our, again, like we talked about in our ERP discussion, a majority of our cars are still under warranty. So we really haven't been seeing a lot of costs come out of there. So uh, we kind of shaved off some money from that. Now, of course, as the vehicles age, then we'll have to maybe readjust that. But we've been pretty good with keeping our, keeping our costs in that line, sort of warranty based. And then with the fuel, since we've kind of cut out the idling with, with the, with the patrol cars, our gas costs have went way down and the engine life increases. And so, yeah, we've been really lucky with that. And but thanks to the officers for helping keep that going. Our, one of our big, again, one of our biggest increases this year, almost a ninety percent increase was in our professional fee line. And that's where we're kind of placeholding that agreement with Urbandale, with our social or with our crisis intervention team line. Uh, Chief Johansson still is kind of up in the air. Uh, he, he thinks that there may still be some grant funding through Inside Out or Heartland. I can't, I don't, I don't, what's called Dallas County, but they've reshuffled the mental health districts. Now it's all kind of under one big mega district here. So they're kind of confident, they're more confident now that there may be some grant funding for that. So that maybe help us lower our costs in that field as well, but it's still sort of green lighted for them. So we're excited about that partnership. Most everything else, we just kept the same. We did not have a decrease. We just, we kind of let, let it there. We shaved off a thousand from office supplies. We're going to try to go collect some pens, free pens somewhere, or you know, collect the posted notes that are not being used uh, to, to do that, you know, print less or uh, so we don't have to waste paper and stuff. But really, uh, our major, our major increases come from the salaries and, uh, that professional fee line. But just the rough numbers from our budget from last year, it's only an eight, eight, eight and a half percent increase, just roughly, not including the, the ERP car stuff. And the Westcom expense comes out of our budget, not the fire department. So we took that cost on from them. So that's why there is such a big total, a big amount there in the communication line. So other than that, that's, I have, if anybody has any questions, I'd have to answer them.
I think your gas, uh, has gone down also because you're using hybrid vehicles as well, right?
Correct.
I was impressed with the pickup of those hybrid vehicles.
We'll talk offline about them.
My hybrid minivan's got some giddy up. So when yours finally arrives, I'm excited for you guys too.
Yeah, we, we're still, yeah, still waiting for that. But really, the next couple of years, most of our fleet will be a hybrid, will be a hybrid at least. So.
Thanks, Chief.
Do you miss the Crown Vic?
Uh, dearly, dearly. You don't know what you have until you don't. Dearly, dearly. You don't know what you have until you don't have it, right?
So Andy can't be here tonight. Adam might have some things to say or I can say about Public Works. It's up to you.
Andy gave me a few notes, so ask the hard questions to Rochelle, but. You'll see here in the salaries and the benefits line, both in Public Works and in Culture and Recreation, a couple of changes. We had two Public Works supervisors much of last fiscal year and some of this fiscal year. As we were training up the new one, and so part of the reason for the salaries and benefits line being flat or slightly down under Public Works is. That shift in staff, but also some additional allocation in the Cultures and Recreation. Salaries and benefits towards Colby Park and the community center to better reflect the time being spent out there. Training allowances and dues is going up a little bit. We've got a lot of new folks at Public Works. And so there's a couple of different training opportunities from snowplow operating and salt distribution. Forestry and other works that we're getting people trained for. And allocating budget for that. Vehicle and repair. We've got a new snowplow coming and I think Andy's very excited about that. We've had issues with the one that's being replaced every time it's snowed so far this year, I believe, so. Looking forward to getting that new one online, and of course, the unloader's been working well, so hopefully we'll have a few less maintenance issues. On that going forward, he is, as he mentioned, planning to resurface the Public Works floor this coming fiscal year as well. Beyond that, there's additional funds being allocated to street maintenance. We've got a fairly. Heavy schedule planned for this year as far as patching as well as stormwater intake replacements. And so there's some additional material expenses beyond the staff time that'll be allocated towards that. Beyond that, Rochelle and Andy had talked about eliminating the sewer component of the budget, since that is all under the purview of the Windsor Heights. Urbandale Sanitary Sewer District. And so we've zeroed out that line item and allocated the few expenses that occur out of there into other budgets and line items. That's the main gist of it. Unless you have anything, Rochelle?
No, that was it. Any questions about that?
With Public Works for the trading, are we cross-trading people too then, so that like everybody is versed in this?
Everyone should be able to drive a snowplow. That's a prerequisite of getting on boarded is the expectation that you're trained in that.
It's not an open invitation.
Everybody. You can drive buses, you can drive a snowplow, just go. Run your driver's license there.
Sign him up.
This was some Saturday fun.
And then beyond that, our goal, you know, when it comes to chemical spraying, right now, we just have one staff member trained. We'd like to have a couple of people trained in that. Playground certification is another one. We don't, we do have one certified right now. We hope to have another one or two certified in that, so. Some cross-training as people inevitably leave or unavailable. Yeah, that's the goal.
I did get an update from Andy that he'd like to do the naming of the new end loader at the Touch a Truck. And then at Fall Fest, do a second contest for naming of the new plow, because he's pretty sure that plow will be ready by Fall Festival.
Pretty sure.
And I said, that's a great idea. And I've already submitted via text to him several ideas for the unloader, but I'm not gonna tell you because I don't want anyone to steal mine. Count Scoopilo, go on. Anybody have questions about Public Works? If we just move on to Culture and Recreation, a lot of that again is Andy's stuff. The only other thing, special events line was increased by five thousand due to current year fundraising by the Special Events Committee, meaning this year's fundraising that happened. Last spring, so.
And so up there, it's specifically Susan. It's, it's the royalty. I did nothing for. T R C volunteers that are. That's true. That I'm schooled in on how to sell Windsor Heights.
And then we, 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 meaning A J and I and Susan, all worked on that funding and how to figure that out and make sure that we were all in the. In the right, and it did come down to five thousand dollars more. So that's fantastic. And then the outside organization requests, that was the community center, the community, community center zoo marina line, which is a weird line. Where that stuff goes, the outside organization requests, and I left that the same as last year. And if you guys want to talk about that quickly, we can. It's on your thing and. We did do, the Finance Committee did have recommendations and those recommendations are in red. The amount that was available was seventeen thousand three hundred, the total amount that they allocated, fifteen thousand seven fifty. So there's an unallocated amount of one thousand five hundred fifty dollars. I don't know if someone from Finance Committee wants to speak or if you want me just to talk about why we decided what we decided.
I've got a couple of questions.
Ask away.
Thank you. So the Chamber requested. Thirty-five, thirty-two? I'm sorry.
They requested five. Oh, sorry, the Chamber requested, yes, sorry, the Chamber.
So what is that? Is that dues? Is that? Gift? What is that?
That gives us the platinum membership, doesn't it? Some form of membership.
It's a membership, yeah.
So it's a membership fee.
Because we paid the Windsor Heights Chamber a thousand dollars, maybe.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, something like that, when. When we were still Windsor Heights Chamber.
I think the difference, this would be my take on it, that they, they've more than proved their engagement and. Willingness to help us, you know, raise. Not only dollars, but engage people in our community. It's brought on, even though they're kind of at a part-time, they really have stepped it up and. So it's for, yeah, it's like our, it's like your membership.
Okay, I was curious.
Worth every penny.
Totally.
Agreed.
I agree. And then. I'm troubled by the Windsor Heights Foundation. They asked for five thousand and. We're giving them thirty-five hundred. Is that?
Well, that's because we had a discussion about this previously.
Yeah, I know.
When we set forward what we were gonna do, so.
I knew that. But it's the only organization that doesn't have paid staff. That gives back to Windsor Heights consistently. With not only hard goods, Colby Park, but also entertainment, so. I was, I was not pleased with that, but that's the Finance Committee's resolve to. I know that they are attempting to do some fundraising and grant writing. But I, again, there's no staff. It's all volunteers and they do a nice job, I think, here in the city. And I was going to comment. Trace that, you know, we were talking about having a five oh one C three doing something for this art project. Do you have a current five oh one C three in the foundation that could perhaps? Do some of that work for you? I'm not volunteering them. I just had that thought while we were talking about creating another.
Sure, but we don't, we wouldn't then manage that budget. They manage their own budget, so that probably won't work.
And just to be clear, we let the foundation know this is the action we're gonna take last year, right? At least, this is the things we're gonna put into motion?
Yeah.
We did.
Yeah.
And this also doesn't capture the waiving of the fees. They get several C E C rentals, they're waiving of the fees for the park. I know that when they've done the Fourth of July, they have paid for the off-duty officer or the off-duty officer so that. We didn't have the negative budget impact from, from that when we reallocated those funds internally for Fall Festival, so. While this is a picture, a snapshot of the financial contributions, certainly not all of the intangibles that we. Or the, you know, the waiving of the fees, the other things that we do for them, so.
Is there a suggestion that we change the?
We have over fifteen hundred dollars in excess. And if we put that fifteen hundred dollars in excess back into the foundation. To meet their request, as we've met others' requests or increased other requests. Think that would be a positive thing.
I would like to see that the foundation does a little bit more sponsorship drives on their own, does a little bit more. Work to, to bring it to us and say, this is what we've done. This is the sponsorships that we've created. We've found, we've worked on. And then maybe that would be, you know, I tried to ask Mark that. And I was never able to get an answer as to how much donations or sponsorships they received a year. That's kind of. Also, you know, we said thirty-five hundred and I think we were specific with them on that. Last year, you know, that this is what we were going to give. So that's kind of. My, my spot is.
I think you're gonna have more. Positive news with the new leadership that's coming into the foundation, so. Mark's tenure is up. So we've got a professional fundraiser now that's going, not we, they have a professional fundraiser now that's going to be taking part in the leadership. But I think we're, we'll see some. Positive opportunities from them.
It'll be exciting to see, yeah. I mean, there, I think as their leadership has changed, you know, of course, I first got to know them when Dave Schwartz was leading it and. You know, there's, with any organization, when there's leadership changes, things change and, you know, we used to get more notice for the luminaries and. The communication stuff was timed better, I think, and seemed more intentional. And so, you know, Mark's been great to work with, comes to our, our Public Works, our, our, our Special Events Committee meetings and. Has been really flexible when we've, you know, on, on the events that they've helped us with. And if, you know, having a fundraiser in a leadership position, I think that'll be really great for the foundation and ensuring their future, because I think. Things have probably been lean for them for a little while.
Yeah, and they had, they had let their five oh one C three status lapse. So they had to come back and redo all of that this past year.
I will not be telling my accountant that information.
I did not hear this. And I guess for me also, I would be okay if Sister City travel, if that was, you know, like every three years or something. I don't really want to stick with just a, like, every two years. Just because as elected officials, we don't even get to do everything that we'd like to do and. We put in a whole lot of time and effort into. You know, working hard to promote the city in what we do. So I would be okay if it was, you know, budgeted every two to three years. Instead of locking us down to every, every other year.
I don't think we settled on every other year.
We didn't. We just said, you know, as it comes up and, you know, every few years, we did, we said two or three.
I think the last one, we prioritized Ricky was on the committee, the executive committee for the trip, so that. Obviously gave it a little bit higher priority.
But we certainly haven't sent people on trips all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've only had one. Yeah, there was one trip. Since two thousand and seven.
So there's only been just Ricky's trip or there's?
Ricky's and then.
Carrie and Ricky.
Oh, that's right, yep.
So does it feel like we should leave it as is?
Or I think it's nice to have just a little bit of extra money in case there is some agency that does come in. I don't know who it would be. You know, that all of a sudden that makes sense for us to kind of put some of our dollars to, that it would help. Our residents in some way, shape or form. Again, I don't know what that would be, but it's nice to have options available.
Could be that your Knights of Columbus need fifteen hundred dollars to finish the project or something like that.
Oh, no, they're gonna come.
Fish fry baby.
They were paying for everything, so.
Amazing.
They'll do it.
The school ball for the minivan purchase.
He's not even listening. Look at him.
Yes, we were making fun of you when you didn't even hear it.
We've got extra money in our budget to really pimp out the new van. Yeah, yeah.
Racing stripes. Flames on the side.
Exhibit on, on the speed dial.
Lauren's gonna cricket it all.
All right, well then we're just gonna move on. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Yep. All right, Economic Community and Economic Development. We have the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance, which is M I P A, which is, used to be the Metro Home Program. We are going to.
Just, just to be clear, it still is the Metro Home Program. It's just administered by M I P A now as opposed to Westmore.
Budgeted for F Y twenty-five, thirty-eight thousand nine sixty-eight. For F Y twenty-six, nine thousand two thirty-seven. Every other year is how that program works. We pay the administrative fees every other year and then the actual bulk. Excuse me. So probably, it's estimated in F Y twenty-seven will be at forty thousand. That program.
You said in twenty-seven, it would be forty?
Twenty-seven. And then the. Des Moines International Airport turmoil project, that will be ending in F Y twenty-six. Our last payment will be twelve thousand twenty-three dollars. And then I don't know what their plans are, if they're gonna ask again or what they're gonna do, but there's that. We are using. We're, we're paying DART from the transportation funding, but we'll actually be putting lost into here to pay for that. The economic development line currently, right now. At the time of this production of this binder, two hundred sixty thousand seven oh seven. That, there is a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of that that has been spent on the purchase of the rent of the home, the property. So we will then be putting that money back in via T I F, so. Though, then there'll still be about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to spend, so.
On accounted for.
Yes, it's all accounted for. It's just.
No, that is available for spending.
Yes, available for spending.
Oh, twenty.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And then, of course, the T I F reimbursements, this is where this is gonna come in, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's why you see that line. It says a hundred, a hundred percent change. That's why this whole total is ninety-eight point forty-eight percent higher than it was last year, so, just definitely. General Government, this is where you have to remember, General Government is so many things. This is wages, benefits, training, travel, mayor, council, city administrator, clerk, finance director, deputy clerk. Also I T, legal services, our annual audit, all city hall, operating expenses, repairs, maintenance, insurance. Also our engineer, bond counsel, financial services, web hosting, and then. Yeah, all of those things are included in this budget. We did cut as much as we, I mean, I tried to cut it as much as I could. So overall increase of only four point four four percent. So. Slowly whittling things away. We can, our debt service payments. Twenty sixteen A, we just talked about this. The mayor, mayor asked this question, when are those twenty sixteen A bonds done? And that's F Y twenty-eight, so we'll be finished with those bonds. But then in F Y twenty-nine is when we're going to take on Seventy-third Street, so that's, all of that will. Have a little time. These are just obviously things we don't have any choice on.
Rochelle, there's a concept about the bonds that you've explained before, but just in case it comes up. Can you remind us the, I think it's like we front-load our bond payments?
We did with twenty A and twenty B. Twenty twenty A and twenty twenty B were both front-loaded. So we actually paid a million to one point two, one point five million dollars per year in the beginning. To, while we had the capacity, and then we had T I F in order to do that. We paid that, we front-loaded it, so we paid those really high payments in the beginning, so that now those payments are really low. So. And then the next page is capital projects. I think we've kind of went through this with our C I P. And then the, the next page on twenty-one is just the expenditures. It kind of goes through how we're gonna pay for all those things. Enterprise funds, just the garbage, garbage and recycling fees, they did go up a tiny bit. I'm sure I have it over there, how much they went up. But we actually aren't increasing the fees to our residents because the garbage and recycling fund has so much money in it. We have plenty of money in it and it's just how it's worked for us, so we don't have to keep increasing fees for the residents. As we see that going down, because we are now. As we see that going down, because we are now actually taking some salaries out of there because it does take time to you, to, to pay garbage and recycling and deal with all those things. That fund will start to decrease slowly, but I can't imagine within the next maybe four or five years, or if there's massive increases that we would have to increase to the residents. So I like to leave it, I like.
Remembered at property tax time.
Yeah, 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 exactly. We did add storm cleanup because there, we had, did have in 24. We did have nothing budgeted in 25 and we did have $27,000 worth of expenses. So I did add in a $30,000 expense for storm cleanup. Hopefully that means we won't have any. So. Yeah. Page 23 is storm water. Again, we talked about this earlier, that there's $150,000 in here to pay for Wilshire Boulevard. And then there's other storm prod, uh, storm, storm water projects that are happening and storm water televising and cleaning and all kinds of manhole cover things going on that they're doing. They're doing all kinds of stuff, the storm water. You know? Yeah, all those technical terms. And then past that is just your budget forms, the ERP and the CIP. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Great job, Rochelle.
Oiled machine.
Thank you.
I did mean to get with you, but we had weather.
I know we did. And I appreciate the guys. They really were helpful this year because when we had a budget or we have budget going on and the changeover from the old software to new software, it's been a disaster. And the guys have been great. So I really appreciate it. Don't recommend that.
Closing comments or questions?
Guys, thanks for helping her out. She couldn't do it without you.
No way.
We do a lot of things, the city staff, the council for all your support and, and again, I'll even feature him being an achievement here that we do appreciate it. So. And they also close 63rd out here and shut that whole thing down.
Really?
Where is this at again? Just so I know if I can get. Okay.
Okay.
Too many of us on 63rd, right around 63rd. We need to logistics to get home.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved back in.
Susan Skiris, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, Teresa Hines.